Okay, I have 6:32 and I'm going to call the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, August 3rd, 2020, 6:30 PM. I see by the member list that all council members are present in the call. Our city manager is also present, and I believe with the city manager is our clerk treasurer, James Johnson, and also our fire chief, John Hallimer. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 6th, 2020.
Kevin Charbonneau, how do you make that motion?
A motion's been made by Mr. Charbonneau. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second, Melissa.
Second.
Okay. I heard Melissa second the motion. So, any discussion on the minutes? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it, the motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. If anyone wishes to make a comment, now is the time for you to make your comment.
I would like to comment on the backhoe and where the funding is coming from, but I assume I can wait until later, is that correct?
That is correct. Anything else on public comment? Then we will move into the next agenda item, which is the Public Works Backhoe Bid and a Vote. We received a memo from Tom Bernier dated July 29th, 2020, and we received three bids for the backhoe. One from Milton Cat with a total of $92,000. The next was Nortrax John Deere at $93,460. And the third was from Borogad Equipment Case, $93,795. Tom reviewed, there was a delay in, as per Tom's memo, viewing the backhoes because of COVID, but once he had a chance to view the backhoe, he requested that we approve the Case 580 SNWT backhoe for Borogad Equipment. Case was the low bid, as far as the actual equipment, and they have a premier warranty, a five-year, $5,000-hour warranty. That's just a summary from the memo that the council received, and I believe it was also posted online. Questions from council members?
Kevin Charbonneau, Mr. Mayor, do we know how many years of $5,000-hour warranty would it amount to? In other words, how many hours per year do they put onto the backhoe?
That is something I'm not sure of, and I don't believe Tom is available tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I am here.
Oh, you are here, Tom. I didn't know you were going to be here. Oh, good, can you explain that?
I'm here. To answer that question, Kevin, our current backhoe, that's a 2013, has just rolled over $5,000 hours on it. And that was one of the big, leading factors to go with the case, even though the guys did prefer the case. The other two didn't offer that many hours, and you'll go over your hours before the, you know, the five years is up. So, Case offers a much better warranty for their equipment.
Okay.
Okay.
Tom?
Tom?
Yeah?
Yeah. My question is the funding. I know that was entirely missed, sure. I was going to question the funding of the backhoe based upon your comment and public comment. My question is, the funding comes mostly out of, I think, the water and sewage. Some of it comes out of the general operating load, correct?
Got to last you there for a second. Actually, we're splitting the two, splitting it in half from the sewer and water, and the trade-in of the backhoe was the other third of the cost of the machine.
But the machines mostly use water and sewage.
Correct.
And it's something that we definitely need, it's something that we have to have.
Yes, we couldn't operate without the backhoe. The backhoe, the water are two of our most heavily used pieces of equipment.
Okay. Look, Dan, we can't hear you. I can see you speaking, but I can't hear you.
I have the same problem. I can use the phone to call.
Okay.
I don't know why the beepers.
Oh.
Oh, it's probably coming, yeah, let me check. They are, they're coming from button beepers. Do we retain the backhoe that we have?
No, that's part of the, the bid was, you have to price for a trade-in cost for that, our current backhoe, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
What were you saying in your memo?
Okay.
Other questions from council members?
And then, as far as the money and the budget gone, this is something that, this is one of the things that we budget over two years?
No. It's completely in this budget here, and we're under that, the cost that I actually had budgeted.
Okay. With that, if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion from the council to approve the backhoe from Borogad Equipment Case in the amount of $93,795.
Dan Ross, so moved.
Mr. Ross, make the motion, is there a second?
Kevin Charbonneau.
Made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion from council members? Other discussion?
Yes, yes. I'm Anna Wong. I'm a resident of Newport. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. My concern is not that I'm a backhoe. My concern is that $60,000 was budgeted in the water budget, which you never approved, the water budget is here. In addition, in the Public Works Capital Budget here, while it's not capitalized, there's $105,000 for capital expenditures. I suggest that you never analyze why water and sewage should pay $60,000 in water budget. You never approve that water budget. And you are aware of this, you sit in control of the water and sewage, and yet you did not approve that back square from the water budget. And you didn't look at how much of the backhoe you just paid for the water budget, and how much you paid by the city Newport's budget. Now, I pay taxes, and I pay water and sewage. And I want someone to be looking at the extent of the expenditures on water, and before you decide that you're going to raise the rate. And I want you to figure out how much of the backhoe should be paid for by water and sewage in terms of how much it's used by water and sewage, and how much should be paid by the regular city budget. Because I think that is a requirement, since you sit as water commissioners, but yet you are not analyzing the expenditures and what the budget is for water and sewage. So, you don't have any approval, you never approve spending $60,000, up to $60,000, on the backhoe for the water budget, because you never approved the water budget. That's the end of my comments.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, would you like to address that comment, please? It's significant. It's really disrespectful to not even address it. This is a public thing, we are the public.
The city manager or Tom? I know one thing, you have to raise the funds to run the water and sewer department. I do know that.
You can.
And, and let me, don't interrupt me, Ms. Lash. The, you have to raise the funds to run that, it's an enterprise fund, and you have to raise the funds to operate that department. A backhoe is a key piece of equipment to run that department. Maybe the city manager can add, and I know, is Mr. Johnson with you too? Because he can discuss the fund also.
I couldn't have said it better myself, Mr. Mayor. An enterprise fund is also a business fund, and therefore it has to be self-sustainable. The fund is also voted on by the city taxpayers, and it goes through review. It's the exact same process, but four is an enterprise fund. Therefore, it has to be self-sufficient. In terms of water commissioners and a review of our budget, we were planning on making a proposal in, right in the middle of March and April, a proposal to raise the rates for water and sewage, because one has not been instituted since 2016. With the loss of the leachate and other factors, we have no choice but to address those rates. So, that will be coming. We pulled back on that presentation because of COVID, and now it's time to ask it again.
Mr. Johnson, have anything to add?
Yeah, I'd like to add, the lower side of the, the enterprise fund is run by ordinance. There's an ordinance for the water fund, water and sewer fund, and that ordinance gives the city council the authority to raise the fees as needed from time to time. It's an enterprise fund, the budget has never, you have to raise the fund that costs to operate it. Absolutely correct. It's all run by an ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Ross?
If I may make a comment?
Yes.
So, the backhoe cost being split with the water and sewer in the city. The question by our citizens is that, are we sure that the water and sewer is using half at the time? So, with that thought, train of thought, that means that, you know, I don't know, is it every month? Every six months? Every year? Do we then count up the number of hours? And if water and sewer used it an hour less, we transfer that much money that month, and it goes back and forth, back and forth, back and forth that way? Or do we just assume that both entities are using this backhoe, and that it makes sense to split the cost? Because we are both probably in the end usually using it equally, as opposed to analyzing every hour, every day, every month, and shifting funds back and forth between the city and water and sewer for every single 15-minute increment that we're using the backhoe, depending on who's using it?
Can I comment?
Um, let me add something to this. We've accepted your comments already. We're not going to go to a back-and-forth discussion. But another thing that people forget, I think it's a third of the water and sewer, Tom can correct me, for our water and sewer plant, not water, but sewer. A third of the sewer is funded by Derby. Am I correct, Tom? So, they're actually helping to pay, support that, who they have.
I believe this, Mayor, I believe it's not like 13%?
13%.
They're only 13% of our plant, yes.
So, they're actually helping to fund the backhoe?
Absolutely.
So, if it was in the general fund, it would just be solely taxpayers, where it's in the enterprise, water and sewer, under the sewer. In theory, Derby is paying the part.
That is correct. And Melissa is quite accurate in her example. We figure that this piece of equipment is used about 75% in the enterprise funds.
Anything else from anyone who do have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, the gist of what I'm trying to say is somebody should be looking, somebody on the city council, because you sit as water commissioners, you should all be looking at the expenses, not only on how much you're going to bring in, but how much are it being expended, and decide that all of those expenses are legitimate, the way you do for the rest of the budget. As you recall, you did the rec budget, the, well, all the other budgets.
Yes, 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 I understand. We get monthly reports for not only the city budget, but for the water and sewer. So, the council does review the monthly expenses from those departments.
But when do you say, no, you shouldn't be spending that amount of money?
Well, I'm not going to get into any more arguments. This is a necessary piece of equipment for operations. How would you like it if your sewer line broke, and we didn't have a backhoe to dig it up and fix it? That's what this comes down to, a water main break. If a major water main breaks, we need this piece of equipment to dig the hole, to find the water, to fix the water leak. This is a necessary piece of equipment. It's something that you just say, oh, we don't need it, let's not buy it, we can just do without.
I said at the beginning, I had no objection to the backhoe being bought. The question was whether or not you're portioning things fairly, and I would like the city council to be reviewing and voting on the budget for sewer and water.
Okay, okay. We're going to call the motion, and we've got, any other discussion? Then, council members, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I heard all four, I heard all ayes. Anybody opposed? The motion carries. Whoops. The next item is we do need an executive session to discuss a point evaluated by a public officer, 1 VSA 313A3. We need a motion to go on executive session.
I move, I'll make the motion that we move it to enter executive session to discuss the employment of a public officer or employee according to 1 VSA A93133A3.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Dan Ross, I'll second the motion.
Oh, I heard two seconds, I heard Melissa, and then I heard Dan and Kevin second it. Any discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. I'll put everyone on hold, then unmute the people who are joining us in executive session.
This line is now on hold. This line is now off hold.
Okay, we are now out of executive session, and I would entertain a motion.
Dan Ross, I would make a motion that we accept Charlie's retirement letter.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
This is Mr. Charbonneau. I'll second the motion, and we should also mention that he anticipates retiring August 21st of this year.
Right. The motion has been made to accept Charlie Ali's retirement as effective August 21st. His last name is the city, would be August 21st, which meant that would be his last date before retirement. And it was made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Kevin Charbonneau. Any discussion?
This is Laura, city manager. I'd like to thank Charlie for his many years of service to the city, and I want to wish him the very finest retirement. He's got a lot of, he's going to put it to Good Houston, his retirement, I'm happy for him.
I would also agree that Charlie's been a valuable asset to the city for many years. Between the various boards and zoning, he's going to have a well-deserved retirement, and I'm sure he will enjoy it. And with that, any other discussion?
I'd just like to say, can I just say that it's nice to see that Newport does have citizens who are so willing to give of their time in positive ways, and to contribute to help with the city, and, you know, help move it forward and take care of things. So, just, thank Charlie for that.
Any other thing else? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. The next item is to review and approve an updated zoning administrative job description. We received a copy in our packet, and I'll kind of let the city manager go over it.
Yes, I, you can see that we posted the original from 2011, and a draft that I generated to update and modernize our job descriptions. One of the things that I did was reorient the prioritization list of duties and responsibilities to put those that are most important at the top of the list. I used as much original language as we had, and I also looked at several other municipalities to get ideas to make sure we were thorough in our job description. And I think I looked at Richford, and Hartford, and Randolph, and it was either Keenan or Callis and Bennington. So, I did quite a bit of research to try to make this a little more comprehensive. So, I presented it to you, and welcome your feedback. I have it open and can make changes right here. So, if you see some things that need to be changed, I can, I can do that. And I'd like to use this for the next level of recruitment. Normally, what the city's practice is, is to conduct an internal recruitment first, and if any candidates come forward that meet the minimums, the city council will interview them. I'm going to shoot for the 17th, assuming that we have internal candidates that meet minimums. If we don't, then I will advertise this externally. So, I'm not sure what kind of a timeline that we have, but my goal would be to use this updated job description for the recruitment process.
Mr. Mayor? Hello?
I've lost sound.
Oops, sorry, Mr. Wilson, I, I didn't realize I was muted.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Wilson here. I heard the city manager say she's going to advertise internally, and to see if we can come up with someone with a minimum qualifications and possibly present it to us. I think we asked for, that's fine if you want to do that, but I think we wanted the job advertised, because there may be someone out there that's just as or better qualified. Hello?
Yes, yes, no, I, I, I agree. I think I better do both. It was going to be both, but only you, only we advertise internally for positions, and then we also advertise externally. Say it, it would be both.
Yeah, so, I did hear that. I was thinking I would do internally first, and then if no one came forward, I would go externally. If you prefer, I do it all at once, it just, it widens the recruitment pool.
I would like to widen.
Recruitment pool.
Other comments from council members? I was muted before when I said I, I read the job description, and I was pleased to see the new updated one. I think that's a good idea. They tend to get, sometimes they tend to get, I use the term stagnant, but it's always good to review the job description every few years. And I was pleased with what we received over the weekend with the update. I did my initial review, and I thought it looked good.
Mr. Mayor, I also think it's very comprehensive and well-laid out. It definitely, you know, reflects the work and things that need to be done at this time. For, on the last part, this is really, really, really minutia, but on the physical demands and working conditions, okay, on the last page, where it says duties and responsibilities take place in a standard office environment? Perhaps we might want to, after place, we want, may want to add primarily?
That actually is a good point, because the zoning administrator is supposed to also be going around the city, you know, looking for possible, well, looking for potential violations, and also answering concerns that people raise about violations. So, there is part of the job, the first requirement, to travel and look at, look at properties and inspect them.
And then to follow, to line up with that, on the last sentence, driving and walking takes place at least weekly?
Wait, wait, Melissa, Laura could be every week again. There, okay, go ahead, Melissa, sorry.
So, in alignment with that, the first one, so it says driving and walking takes place at least weekly? Maybe we could just add outdoor? So, it says driving and outdoor walking takes place at least weekly?
That's true, I agree.
It's not the whole, you know, it's not that important, but it just might help define it a little better.
Anything from other council members on the job description, the updating?
This is Dan. The other thing that she had talked about is the hours. So, if we want 28, we should say 28, but if we're happy with it saying 20 to 25, then it doesn't have to be changed. And I'd just like to say that she did an incredible job putting this together. I know she put a lot of time into it, and it's not strictly a boilerplate piece of paper. And it's not strictly a, a boilerplate piece of paper. It was, it was done with some thought. And I'm very grateful for that. That's it?
Thank you, Dan.
Anyone else? Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
Um, we're, it says he asked that the person has to have a driver's license and a vehicle. Are they compensated for the mileage?
Yes. Here's, it's the, uh, it's the IRS approved rate, which gets changed every January.
Okay. Yeah, other than that, it's, it's very good, uh, job description while we're in.
All right, any other comments? Laura, did you want to add anything?
I just need to confirm if you want it to say twenty to twenty-five or if you want it to be twenty-eight. That's the only thing I need to confirm. I'll make the changes that Melissa recommended. And then I would ask for council approval. And I'll, where it says approved by council on the top of the page, I'll put state on it should the council decide to approve it and we'll get running.
So could we only stay in there twenty to twenty-eight? Or is that too broad?
Well, um, you can, well, if we go, uh, I, I hope about twenty-five to twenty-eight. That gives it a little, little sign. Twenty-five to twenty-eight is the council's.
Okay. Anything else? Then, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the updated zoning administrator's job description.
Uh, this is Dan. Uh, so moved.
Motion made by Mr. Ross. Is there a second?
Second?
Kevin Charbonneau, second.
I heard Mel- Melissa seconded it. Um, we're all competing. Any discussion on the motion?
I, I guess the only thing I would, would say is that the ad- advertisements will go out immediately.
I just have to put it together. My goal is to get it out by the close of business tomorrow. Given my workload, it might end up being Wednesday, but it'll be out the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. That was a good body of work and I appreciate your help.
Okay, moving on to new business. Um, I don't have any new business this evening. Um, I'm gonna go down the list. Mr. Ross, any new business?
Uh, yes, I'd like to mention one thing. Uh, the grandstand, the, uh, roofing is loose. If that comes off in a windstorm, it becomes a missile. And it is truly a, uh, a hazard. So I don't know if something can be done about that.
I will mention that at staff meeting tomorrow. I know that's a complex, um, situation, uh, given that deterioration on that building and what our, uh, insurance, uh, would say. So let me bring it up at staff meeting tomorrow and see what logical next steps are.
Okay, thank you.
Other new business, Mr. Ross?
No, that's it.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Uh, yes, uh, there's been quite a few comments praising the flowers and the landscaping in the city of Newport. Uh, and in fact, I, I sent you one of those, uh, email or messenger. Uh, so I'd just like to reiterate, it's a fantastic job and our, our city is looking really good.
I will, I received numerous compliments about the flowers and how beautiful Newport looks. I've been following some of the comments online and, um, it's been well, well received. And Robert's done one heck of a job. Color coordinating and having everything come to a great coordination and just absolutely beautiful and spectacular, in my opinion.
I'd just like to offer, uh, Robert and a few other, uh, folks, city took a drive down to the, um, source of his inventory, Pleasant View Gardens last week. And, uh, we had a tour of next year's color schemes. And it was really breathtaking. And how fortunate are we to have, uh, Robert's talents. I'm really looking forward to fall. Not that I watch this time of year, it's very beautiful. But it will give you, uh, something to look forward to. We have ordered the fall banners. And they'll be going up in, in mid-September. So we have some time to enjoy what we already have in this beautiful time of year. But very, to keep our finger on the pulse and, and moving the city forward. It's a lot of fun and I'm really delighted with, uh, positive comments. It's so rare. So when you get them, it's, it's really profound. So thank you to everybody who appreciates what the city has done and Robert's very nice talents.
And I think it's especially true this year through the difficult times with the pandemic and, and everything, you know, associated with that. And I just think it's, it just, I think it just lifts people's spirits when you see beautiful flowers and how the community just looks so, looks so nice. It's just, it just lifts people's spirits. Any other, any other new business, Mr. Charbonneau? No? Okay, Ms. Pedersen?
Yeah, it's not so much business as it is anecdotal. Um, wasn't this past week or the one before I was getting my, uh, one sixty-five tank of gas at Cumberland Farms. And about, uh, six ATVs kind of put it into the gas, to the pumps. And I was kind of curious as to where they were from, so I did go over and speak to them. And, um, they were from Southern Vermont, they were from Bennington. They were staying at Proudey Beach, they were camping there. And they said that, um, when they had said to their friends and things that they were coming up to the, up to Newport, the reaction of their friends down in the southern end of the state was, why do you want to go there? There's nothing there. And they were, they said, oh my gosh, it is just so beautiful here. We have never been here before. And it is so beautiful and we're coming back in September. And, you know, it was kind of nice to hear. It was, uh, and again, they were all, you know, I mean, I don't know what they do all the time, but they all look fairly responsible. And so they were just putting along, they weren't, uh, speeding around or anything like that. So it was nice. It was nice to hear something, something positive. And they were thankful that the city had, you know, made it available.
Anything else?
I, I'd just like to add a little bit to that. Cause I live on the Glen Road. And I see them go by all the time in groups of five, six. You know, sometimes a single. The people wave. I've yet to see anybody going too fast. In fact, they may be going too slow, which doesn't bother me. But it, it's good to see them. And, uh, it's good to see the quantity of people that are, are doing it. So a good thing for the city.
And to follow up, Dan, I know at Proudey Beach, they generally have been coming up and staying at Proudey Beach. I know Melissa said those folks were staying there. And I know, I think, I think Jess put something up, uh, on her webpage that they had a whole group staying last weekend again too. So I think it's been a win-win.
Yeah. Yeah, and they're taking advantage of, uh, the food trucks over at the park. So good for everybody.
It's good. Any other, any other new business, Melissa?
Yeah, that's it.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I have something, I, I was gonna use it under all, but I'll, I'll say it now so the whole council knows. I had, uh, asked the city manager to come over on Longview and look at some of the damage to the street. She was here within fifteen minutes, which was great. And she brought Tom with her. And Tom didn't realize how bad the street was. And within two days, we had paved and made a temporary repair. And I will say temporary because this spring, when Dan was street sweeping, the street sweeper started to go through the road. And he came back and put a cone in it, right at the end of, uh, the brass hours driveway. And they're still holding up on the, how they can repair their driveway. But here's the deal. When I, first time I was on the council, we had a fifteen-year turnaround on city streets. Longview was paved in nineteen ninety-nine when I arrived. And by our, our plan, it's scheduled for twenty twenty-two, which equates to twenty-three years. The road, and even Tom said it's washing out underneath. If we temporarily repaired it, that's good. Uh, we have since got, uh, a leaking pipe that comes across and leaks all winter coming out of Broadview's house. The top of the hill, the, uh, they did fill in a couple more potholes. But on any given day, the tar just breaks off in big chunks and it just rides on down the road. And, uh, I don't, I'm just saying, I don't think we can wait till twenty twenty-two. This is, this street is in bad shape. And, and I want to thank, uh, Mr. Ogden for coming over and taking a look at it. And, uh, uh, and, and with Tom with her, I, I think it was good that they saw how bad it was. And I'm just putting that out to the council so that down the road, uh, if it gets any worse, I'm gonna really be harping about it. But the street is, it's, it's really a bad street. And at the top, where the old hospital used to be, there's been about three cuts across the road. And when they try to plow in the winter, they, they, they can't get it all because of the dips and the holes up there. And, uh, so I just wanted to let you all know that. But I do want to thank, uh, Public Works for coming out within two days and doing a temporary repair. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Laura, any new business?
Yes, I'd like to ask the council if I could use, um, some of your special projects funds in order to host a little, um, gathering, uh, at respect for Charlie on the twenty-first. I'd like to put together some sort of, um, uh, CDC protocol acceptable, um, uh, event, uh, such as hosting a dessert or a luncheon for him. Uh, for the fire chief, when he departed, we had dessert catered at the fire station. And I'm hoping I can do something similar, perhaps in our senior center, uh, to help a little bit. And, uh, the fire chief was funded out of those funds. So I'd like to request permission to use, uh, maybe three hundred bucks out of the special projects fund to, uh, do something nice for Charlie on his last day.
We just have, one thing Laura, just so the city can think, I don't mind with that is, uh, we have to make sure we adhere to the strict COVID protocols.
Exactly, that's.
For the distancing and mandates, not having more people in that senior center than is allowed, things like that.
Yep, definitely. So if I could get a, um, I don't know if I need a motion. If you're all comfortable with that, I'll move forward with it.
I mean, we have money in that fund. I can't remember the amount, but we're doing a new budget here, so.
I think it's about three thousand.
Three thousand, so, I mean, I haven't, I don't know other council business fields.
Mr. Mayor, I have no problem. Actually, uh, no problem.
Fine with me.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. And, uh, Jim is in my office too. I have no further.
Jim, Mr. Johnson, any new business?
Yeah, well, uh, some of the rest has come up on the eleventh. On the eleventh, it'll be August and the floors will be open. So if anybody asks you, you'll be opening the floors. We have a little different design where they come in one side and out the other and see if there's a match and disinfectants and the whole work. I've now got, I have five hundred ballots already, so I don't expect to be a real busy day. But we, we're gonna hope and carry on as normal as best we can.
Okay, sounds good. Any other new business?
All set, Jim?
Yeah, he's all set.
Okay, we'll move on to old business. The only old business I have, um, I just wanted to let the council know that the last email correspondence that I had with Mr. Phelps, you got a copy of it and he seems to have vanished. And so I was suspicious of the email from the very beginning. And so as soon as I offered to meet either in person or a video conferencing call, all of a sudden, Mr. Phelps has now vanished. And so I'm just taking his demands with a grain of salt. And I just wanted to let the council know that because I have had no further correspondence from him since, um, my offer. So I just wanted to let the council know that. So I consider that closed, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for closing the loop on that, Paul. It was, you know, it was, it was obviously suspicious to begin with. So thanks for doing that.
You're welcome. Um, and the only other thing I've been getting, I don't know, for some reason, um, there's people in the community who think that I can control, um, people who are incarcerated and wave a magic wand and get them released. So I've been receiving quite a few emails and I just forwarded them on to the police chief and the city manager. Cause I have no power or authority to have people released from jail. So I just thought I'd let you know, those, some of the emails that I've been receiving lately, I think I've had about three or four. And it's just, seems kind of interesting that all of a sudden I'm receiving all these emails asking for help to get their boyfriend out of jail or all sorts of things. So I just thought I'd let the, I didn't bother the council sending you all those emails, but I just thought I'd let you know some of the things I've been receiving lately.
And Mr. Mayor, it might now be a bad idea to let our state's attorney receive some of those emails as well. Uh, she might find them interesting or have more to the story.
Right, right. I will keep that in mind. Um, I think basically they sent them to me because they aren't happy with the state's attorney. But I just been forwarding them to Travis, who I assume probably was sharing them with the state's attorney. But I can always share them directly with her.
And it's just a thought?
Yeah. Good idea. That's all I had on old business. Um, Mr. Ross?
Um, I just have, uh, a slight concern. I don't know, uh, over here, uh, there's a couple of storm drains on the street that are really bad. But I've noticed a lot of orange cones around town. So I was hoping maybe we could get an overview of how bad the situation is with our storm drains and our manholes.
Okay.
Yes, I'll also discuss that at staff meeting tomorrow. I'll ask Tom to, uh, generate something, um, or put that on the next agenda.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Dan, you just triggered my memory. I just wanted to appreciate the memo from Tom regarding the updates to the EV charging station, Proudey Beach and Main and Second.
Yeah, it's an excellent memo.
Yeah, I, that, that, I thought was a good update. So I just wanted to thank Tom for that, cause that gave everybody, uh, what I thought was a real good detailed update.
Yes.
Um, any, uh, any old business, Mr. Charbonneau?
No.
Ms. Pedersen?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No, no.
Ms. Dogg?
I do have one. I don't want to put a damper on, uh, such a positive thing and such a productive meeting. Um, as you know, that, uh, we just are going through audit process. And, uh, it was brought to our attention that although our current collections are basically at the same place that they were last year and the year before, pre-COVID and without COVID, uh, what has been impacted is our delinquent tax collection, uh, specifically those properties that are, are, were on tax sale or are on tax sale. We called that, um, we were in the midst of a tax sale back in March, uh, about ready to launch it during the month of April or May. And we decided to suspend it, uh, to see what COVID, uh, was gonna have for impacts. And, uh, as we've gotten through, and it's seemed, I don't want to change anything by saying they seem to be settling down. It is the recommendation that we, uh, pick up the taxi where we left off. Um, I do have payment plans with folks.
plans with folks, and I've given them till November. So the likelihood is that we will be shooting for mid-November for the tax sale that was previously approved and scheduled in the, in the spring. So I just wanted to let you know and get the word out there that we're going to resume with our normal process, hoping to have it done in mid-November. So thank you for that.
Any other old business?
Not for me, thank you.
Anything from Mr. Johnson?
No.
Okay. And with that, the next city council meeting will be a remote meeting on Monday, August 17th, 2020. I'm assuming things will continue, so that's why I'm saying a remote meeting. I'm just assuming with the, with the COVID and with everything happening still, that I'm just going to plan out another remote meeting. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:41.
Move to adjourn?
I'll make that moment.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.